Thank you for stopping by Minnesota Black Robe Regiment. As always, make sure you subscribe here on YouTube. Check out the bell icon down below so that you're getting notifications when the content drops. If you're watching on rumble because you can't stand YouTube, um, you should get a notification in your email when I make new content if you are a follower. I'm using my South Dakota Badlands cup today because the amount of coffee that I need after what I experienced last night is not suitable for the smaller cup. And if you want one of these, let me know, we can order you one. It's probably going to cost you a little bit. Anyway, that being said, um, attended the Albert Lee area school district school board meeting last night and had a little bit of an interesting, shall we say, situation take place. I arrived at about 4:20, um, board meeting didn't start till 5:00. Lisa Hanson from the interchange in Stanford Liberty met me there. A bunch of, I shouldn't say a bunch, but about five, 10 people from her crew were gonna, we're gonna be there because they wanted to address the slanderous and defamatory and utterly untrue libelous comments made about them by superintendent Funk. And one of the reasons that Lisa was going to speak at the meeting last night was because school board chair Dave Klot, Klot, Klatt, kitty cat, clutter clatter, Klot, was, um, less than helpful in his response to Lisa's demand for Mr. Funk's public apology. And stated that it was a dead issue and that legal counsel said that there was no actionable, discipline or anything that could be taken. And he spoke on part of the school board, the entire school board. He spoke on part of the entire school board. Now that raises some other questions and we're gonna, we'll have Lisa and some other people dig into how, how he has that authority to speak for everybody on the school board. And I want to know if every single school board member signed off on his statement to Lisa Hanson. And we'll address that in a, in a, in a separate video. But that's why we were there last night. And I was there to monitor and observe. Quite frankly, I've seen how Klot has treated people in the past. And so I decided I was going to be there and make sure that, uh, the, the liberties of the people for Stanford Liberty were actually protected and that Lisa and others were allowed a voice. And I was going to monitor and that was my whole purpose for being there. Well, we got there and, uh, good old Davey wasn't there for the meeting. I don't know where he was. Um, I hope he's not ill. That's true. I really do not want him to be ill. the person that was acting as chair was, if I remember correctly, this, uh, this young lady right here, Kim Nelson. She's a vice chair. So we're, you know, just, I want you guys to note, um, that each one of the school board members has their own email at the school. It's their first name, dot their last name, at ALS schools.org. So we, um, in this name in particular, right here that I'm highlighting, he, he Dennis Deizer, Deizer, um, I want you to pay special attention to him because he is, shall we say, an interesting little man, uh, interesting petty, petty, petty little man. And, uh, his comments, um, in this situation are very, very telling. Lisa sent me because I asked her to. This is the open forum signup. Now I want you to note, okay? We have an individual here signed up who's there to speak on part of the school, uh, the union, speaking about, uh, union business. Okay. Then we have, um, this individual Kelly Enzer, Albert Lee, no organization. Um, she, uh, and all of these people are, as private citizens are free to speak. I have no, I know no issue with that. Then we have, uh, Melinda Telemontes who is speaking on part, on, on behalf of the Halverson schools. Uh, and then we had a, then we had a Dave and David Enzer there who, for Halverson, I don't, I don't know what that, and then we had another person from Albert Lee's from the high school and Max Jeffrey speaking, their organization for the high school. And then we had Lisa sign up. We had another individual's name was crossed off. But what we had here is one, two, three, four, five, six people that got there before we, we did, before Lisa and I walked in and signed up. Six, I mean Lisa, the seventh speaker, she looked right at me and she goes, I'm not going to get on to speak because they only allow two minutes for five people for a total of 10 minutes. And, and we're gonna, you guys are going to see why this is important. Well, this is going to come into play here very, very quickly. But I want you to pay close attention and I want you to understand why all of this is important and why we're gonna, why we're playing this out the way we are in the video and why we're just cutting out to the, we're cutting to the, the public comment section. And then we're going to also watch closely after the public comment section and, and, and I want you to emphasize, please pay close attention to what happens here under the dictatorial, um, thumb of the, the acting chair, Kim. It's vitally important that you pay close attention to that. So let's, let's take a look.
We're going to start with, um, the open forum, but I'd like to read a statement first. Open public forum will be placed on the agenda for regular board meetings. During this part of each regular school board meeting, up to 10 minutes of time will be allowed for district constituents to address the school board. Each person is asked to identify him herself by name. And if he or she represents an organization, to name the group. Remarks should be addressed to the board as a whole. Each presentation may have up to two minutes of time. The school board will not hear complaints about individual school employees or permit discussions of such matter in an open meeting. No response, reaction, nor action shall necessarily be taken by the board during the open forum portion of the meeting. And the school board will take no action at a meeting on an issue raised for the first time by the public. Tonight, um, our open forum signup, we have 15, uh, community members that would like to speak. So because of the time limit, I've chosen to, uh, select five people. And so I just took the top three or the first three that signed up and the last two, just to make sure that it was, it was fair that way. If we end up not going 10 minutes, we'll add at the end, but that's how we're going to proceed at this point. Also, we'll have a timer. Um, Ashley will be, um, doing the timer for us. And so, um, the first person I'd like to call up is Al Halverson.
It's on you, okay? Hi, yeah, my name's Al Halverson from Albert Lee here. Um, I, I guess some of the friends around you, you might have known that, um, my own generation and, um, we've been there four weeks already. I thought I'd come in and talk to you guys, um, to get a feel of pulse of how things are going with the staff. Um, we've got a lot of good, good things happening. We had the flex time worked out. Uh, some of the staff really appreciate being to come, being able to come early and go late. Um, you know, 15 minutes with their kids. Um, another thing, when I talked with Mike earlier, trying to make some good things out of the COVID deal. Um, conferences are going to be zoom again. And I don't know if you realize this tonight, but when some parents come in, they can't find daycare. People who watch their kids, they bring in 10, 15, you know, I shouldn't say 10, 15, but you know, five, six kids. And, uh, yeah, and so that's a thing. Uh, Beth Isaacson and Jim, Jim Meyer from the administator are going to come. And their administator is going to come down and help again with phone calling for the referendum. And so we got that going for us. Um, the math, back to the mask or to start with the mask thing, I meant Southwest and it's not a problem at all. And I actually would like to, um, commend for going to the elementary with, with mandatory mask. We have a teacher that teaches in the elementary. Her father is in his seventies. He has cancer. The mother's gone, she died a few years ago. And she's the one that has taken to the treatments. And she's very concerned about, you know, she deals with, I don't know, she's first or second grade. And one last thing before I go, we're working on a disability bank and that's, that's, uh, another plus that our members really, really, really like. So that's kind of a heads up, what's going on?
Next on the list is Kelly Enzer.
My name is Kelly Enzer. Um, I just wanted to start by saying, um, thank you first of all, but there comes a point in everyone's life when we face adversity and uncertainty. Some situations we train for and yet some we are caught off guard by. The way in which we respond to either situation is what makes us a great state, a great county, a peaceful city, respectable school district, and a cohesive community, and a supportive member of each of these. In many organizations, leaders are elected or voted in. We need leaders. Without them, there would be corrosion from within and no standards to follow. No integrity, there would be chaos, toxicity blamed, and then latch on to words like amendments, freedom, and rights. Over the last two decades, I found myself wondering how in the world, how the world continues to find people who are willing to take on the role of a leader in a world full of ugly hatred, inconsideration, and selfishness. When the last of my children graduated from Albert Lee area school district, I have accumulated 72 years of parenting in these schools. Six children, twice times 12 years of school is 72 years. That's more than anyone I can think of. So I wanted to take the time to thank all of you. Teachers, staff, administration, supportive school board members, local union members. Thank you. You have had to navigate through uncharted waters and you have taken on more than imaginable to make sure every student feels safe, loved, and supported. Over the past year and a half, you've had to deal with the backlash and negativity of community members, finding new ways of teaching and holding conferences, safety procedures for yourself, students, and our entire community. And you have continuously risen to the challenge. For all of this, I want to say thank you. Thank you for keeping our community's safety as your number one priority and bravely making challenging decisions based on facts, science, best interests, and standing strong in your decisions. Thank you very much.
Next is Melinda Telemontes.
Hi, I'm Melinda Telemontes. I live here in Albert Lee and I work at Halverson Elementary. Um, so good evening and thank you for giving me the opportunity to talk with you today. Like I said, I teach fourth grade at Halverson Elementary and I've been teaching for 12 years. I would like to take this opportunity to talk to you about our new elementary science curriculum. It's called Antifying. Our district recently purchased this curriculum for all of four of our elementary buildings. Um, although we just started the school year, when we've just begun diving into the materials with our students, um, we have been given a few training opportunities as well. Upon speaking with the other teachers, both in my building and in other buildings that have started using this curriculum, um, there are a few, and they are all a few lessons in, as am I, I would like to share with you some of the exciting things that we are seeing. Our students are engaged, they're excited, and they're working collaboratively. They enjoy the online simulations and the investigations they are participating in. They are learning to think like scientists. We are not teaching science as an isolated subject this year. The curriculum provides students with math opportunities, reading, writing components, critical thinking opportunities, and hands-on materials in the form of experiments, which they love. All of the materials are provided and in each, in each building has an equitable access to the materials and the resources. The materials are high quality and renewable. That's an exciting thing for school teachers. They come well organized. They also come with extension opportunities and differentiations for all students. The lessons have real-life applications. For example, when asked today how many students have experienced an electrical blackout, almost every student shared their experience about losing power. We have to investigate what causes these blackouts in this lesson and come up with solutions to prevent blackouts. One of the hands-on experiences we'll be using will include a solar panel to convert energy. Talk about it, I.
Next is Jeff Miller.
Uh, I'd like to thank all the board members for giving me this opportunity to speak. My name is Jeff Miller. Um, retired educator. I live here in Albert Lee. Uh, and I guess if I really want to disclose skeletons, a former teacher here as well, uh, back in the mid eighties through the late nineties. And I ended my career as a, as an assistant principal in a neighboring district, that same size as Albert Lee. And as part of those duties there, I spent a great deal of time as an assistant principal dealing with attendance and dealing with, uh, making sure that our building was staffed properly, uh, dealing with any kind of issue ranging from training for potential shooters to, uh, N1H1, you name it. All kinds of things that happen in a normal high school situation. And I, I feel like I, I want to emphasize to you that how important it really is in order for school districts to operate. We're people-driven, you know, have widgets, we have people. In order for people to perform either as a teacher or as a student or as an administrator, whoever it happens to be, you need to be able to come into an environment that you know is going to be safe. You know, it's going to be healthy and it's going to do well for me. And as a school board, I would highly encourage you to do and consider anything that's going to make that happen. And in this particular case, I know that, uh, there are some things on your agenda tonight that are going to talk directly toward safety and health of your students and your staff. And I would highly encourage, uh, you to ensure that you do all that you can. And that would include masking, um, your students and your staff. You've already made that decision. It's the right decision. Stick with us. Thank you.
I apologize for not saying this name right, but it's Mike Shodog. I'm sorry, you can share with us how it is. Yeah, I'll give you a little five seconds to tell us how to say your name.
My name is Michael Chapin and I'm a retired educator who spent 20 years in the school district. And the first thing I want to do is thank you for the opportunity to speak tonight. I also want to express my gratitude for how well you've handled these uncharted waters of COVID-19. I did some research this afternoon and I discovered that 94.7% of medical professionals in this country are in favor of masks. Granted, that's not all, but there are still medical professionals to this day who claim that cigarette smoking has nothing to do with heart disease, asthma, or any other medical issues. So there are always going to be some outbursts. I also discovered that 82 and a half percent of Americans in this country favor masks. That's to me an obvious number. It's something that I think we have to factor into making our decisions. I was an athlete for many, many years. And I have to say, I did not play on teams that won every game. But when I see all of this continued hassle over the mask, I can't help but think of something I learned in athletics. When you don't win every game, what happens? My advice to the anti-masking minority is the same thing I had to do as an athlete. You know, suck it up and then go to games and enjoy the moment. Thank you.
Present facts.
Our open forum portion of the meeting has ended. We'll move on to.
Madam Chair, I'd like to move that we add 10 more minutes to open forum tonight since there is a, a good amount of public speakers who have.
Absolutely. That's a public servant right there. That's a public servant. That's a public servant.
Our, our practice has been that we offer 10-minute open forum, no matter if we have one person, no people, or 15. So I would like to keep it that way and we'll move on to celebrating.
She made a motion. She made a motion.
We will have quiet in the galley, all right?
She made a motion.
We are conducting presence of the school.
Unfair.
There's a motion on the table. There's a motion to extend the open forums, or open forum section of the meeting. And a second. Is there any discussion?
Um, the, the board arbitrarily sets the policy that's in place and the board ultimately can make changes as needed. It's a board set policy, uh, board can adapt as needed. There were 15, um, members who wanted to address the board. Um, the, the selection process seems, um, could seem, uh, as if we were trying to stifle public input. Rarely do we ever have anybody here wanting to talk to us. And so I would like to provide more of an opportunity for the community to, to share their input. We know there's a lot of thoughts going on right now and it's important for people to feel heard. Thank you.
I just want to say, I think it takes a lot for people to come and talk to us. It's very uncomfortable for a lot of them. So to have somebody sign up regardless of what they have to say, I, I'm willing to listen. I would be willing to listen to everybody, but I think Jill's motion is, uh, very scary, so.
I'm a little concerned about voting to contradict one of our own policies. Um, I've, I've been to board meetings where that policy didn't exist many years ago. And it wasn't resigned. Uh, it went on and on and on and it just accelerated and got quite literally out of hand. So, uh, in fact, I'm quite certain that that's why that policy was put in place many years ago so we could maintain some integrity in our proceedings and so I wouldn't have to take the narrow path.
Our policy sets boundaries for our operations, just like we have a policy for our agenda. We can add to our agenda, we can propose to change it. It's the same thing these parameters were put on during the calendar discussion. I was on the board when it happened. They're very limiting. I mean, even in the council, you don't see 10 minutes. Rarely do boards limit for 10 minutes in a public setting. Uh, and 10 minutes is not out of line. And in the future, I'll be requesting that we revisit this policy, but my motion stands for tonight. Any other discussion?
Most of what we're going to hear, we've been hearing and hearing, um, out in the community, I'm going to tell you, it's been about 20 to one on the issue that they're talking about. And to just keep rehashing it and rehashing it, we need to get out of our business and do what we need to do. Every point is valid and what they have to say, but we're not hearing anything new. So I feel we need to move on. I will vote no.
Wow.
We need a border. I think one wrap is enough. My ears, my ears are having them. I'm trying to begin.
I don't need to sit through this crap. I'm tired of it.
Wow. You sir are out of line, public servant.
You sir.
I am, as board chair, I'm calling a recess for this meeting. And we, the board will leave and we will find a room downstairs. Dr. Funk will help. I'm trying to begin.
I don't need to sit through this crap. I'm tired of it.
Wow. You sir are out of line, public servant.
You sir.
I am, as board chair, I'm calling a recess for this meeting. And we, the board will leave and we will find a room downstairs. Dr. Funk will help.
You're going to do what?
We, we are recessing until we can gain order.
This is a public meeting.
In 10 minutes, we will come back.
Parents have a right to listen to these meetings.
You guys can set up who gets to speak by picking the first three and the last two. You get to pick and choose who's the last two to sign up.
Are you all going to a room to be in private?
No, we're going to separate rooms, thank you.
Can we follow because this is a public meeting?
Watch my camera.
Where's the closest water fountain? Excuse me?
Follow the hallway around, I don't know.
Follow, follow the board members.
They don't want to hear it.
Sorry, I didn't mean to like rando who you don't know, tell you to watch what you're doing. That, ladies and gentlemen, is the sign of tyranny.
Motion has been made and seconded that we add 10 minutes to our open forum. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed?
Aye.
Motion is not carried. Moving on to the next agenda item.
Could have had it done and over with again.
The next agenda item is celebrating district.
Okay. You, you saw this, you saw how this played out. There again, sounds confrontational, but there's something else that took place too. And I, and I want to show you this. Uh, I, I follow, obviously I followed Kim out because I was going to make sure that they were not, that they were not trying to meet. Now, I do not believe that Angie or Jill would have done that. But I do believe that Kim would have tried to meet with the others if we hadn't called them out and then had people follow them. And I'm a hundred percent serious. And I don't know if, if Kim took directions from people. I don't know if Funk was behind telling her what she needed to do, if there was people who showed up to speak. But what I do know is that Funk stepped out of line. And here's, here's why I'm going to tell you. This, this testimony is from the school board member Jill Marin. And we're going to look at it. So either she's lying, which I do not believe is the case at all. I've seen nothing but integrity and ethical behavior from her. So either she's lying or, um, Mr. Funk has forgotten his place and needs to be disciplined. End of story. Funk needs to be disciplined. So let's take a look at what, what, uh, last night after the meeting, so almost 12 hours ago at this point, um, Jill, so about, uh, 11:15 last night roughly, um, Jill Marin, school board member, and this is her public school board member page, posted at tonight's board meeting, 15 persons had signed up to address the board during open forum, as, as you guys all saw already. The acting chair, Kim Nelson, read a statement outlining the policy of two minutes per person and 10 minutes maximum for the entire open forum, as you guys all heard. and ten minutes maximum for the entire open forum," as you guys all heard. "The acting chair chose the first three and the last two persons who had signed up to speak when the, when the ten minutes were over. I moved that ten more minutes be added to the open forum so others could speak. The acting chair tried to overrule it, but the motion gained a second. In discussion, one member said, in part, 'I don't need to sit through this crap, I'm tired of it, it's bull.'" At which uproar ensued, the gavel was pounded again and a recess was called. "The superintendent then ordered me to leave the room. I told him he has no authority concerning that, I refused to leave." The superintendent ordered her to leave the room. This is her testimony. This man is out of control. Mr. Funk is out of control. When members came back, one member said, "We need to just call the question." The meeting resumed and another member called the question. "The proposed additional ten minutes failed two to four. Marin, Hoffman, four, and Nelson, Scar, Deizer, and Olson against. The chair was absent from tonight's meeting for some unknown reason." Now, probably not entitled to know why, but even I believe Jill is picking up on, there's something here that is hinky. Something's happening here and, and there's some frustration setting in. Okay? Frustration is setting in. "There was no clarification as to why teacher report was included in the open forum, then within the meeting, as historically has been our practice. Additionally, I'm told by community members that there was an overflow room tonight equipped with video feed. As a board, we were not aware of this. I will be requesting the open forum policy be reviewed as I feel it is too restrictive. The restrictions were put in place during the calendar discussion several years ago, ago in order to limit public input received in open forum." This is your government at work. I want people to understand what is happening here. You have a school board member who is publicly speaking out against the actions of this school board. Chiefly, and more importantly, not only does a good portion of the school board outside of Angie and, and Jill not understand who they serve, not only, Angie and Jill are phenomenal representatives, phenomenal representatives and public servants to the people of the Albert Lee School District, but the rest of this board are either useless bumps on a log, one of them sat through the entire meeting when information was being presented, staring off into space. In fact, it almost looked like he was falling asleep. Mr. Funk, who is not a member of the school board, repeatedly argued with school board members, repeatedly. And in the, and we will be posting the entire duration of the school board meeting on the Minnesota Black Robe Regiment Rumble Channel. So I want you to watch it, but this part is incredibly important. Funk is out of line and he tries to throw his weight around in a way that is just absolutely horrendous. And this is not the first time there have been issues with him at all, not at all. That's how I even got involved in this situation in the first place, is that Lisa Hansen made me aware of, of what had happened back several, several months ago. I almost need something stronger than coffee, this is getting ridiculous. So you guys need to start taking action. This school board, Angie and Jill need to receive emails applauding them, applauding them for their actions. Reach out to Jill on her Facebook page for Jill Marin, school board member, and applaud her. But also flood Jill and Angie with emails, and, and their emails will be included in the description of this video. Flood Jill and Angie with applause for their activity, for what they've done. And then after that, every other one of them, including Funk, who is not a member of the board, he has no authority on the board, he has no vote on the board, he has no authority over the school board members, he needs to receive emails calling him to account, and the rest of the school board needs to receive emails telling them that they, it's time that they either get in line with the will of the people, not just a certain segment of the population who is, who are compliant sheep, but they need to start representing the people. They need to be flooded with emails demanding a change to their policy on public forum or the public forum needs to be completely eliminated. As you saw, it was packed. This public forum was packed ahead of time. This was, and teachers speaking on behalf of the school district were allowed to fill the public forum. They should not have been filling the public forum. If they're going to speak on behalf of the school district, they should not be allowed in the public forum, they should be added to the agenda. And, and the union rep, as Joe, as, as Jill pointed out in her statement, took up time. That was calculated. That was a calculated maneuver. I don't have evidence, but I believe, and I, and I will, I'm, I'm going to tell you, I believe that plot, or clot, and this Kim and that Funk were complicit in organizing this. They were there, their entire intent was to shut down dissent. And I want you to note, had, had they just allowed the, the extra ten minutes, had they done the reasonable thing, had not this Dennis Deizer, Geezer, whatever, had he not said the thing that he said, where he said, "I've heard from plenty of these people and I'm tired of listening to their crap." Think about that, he is a public servant. He is an elected public servant and he's tired of hearing from people and their crap. He's sick of it. He should receive so much civil, peaceful, well-worded, non, 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 non vulgar commentary via his email, that the pressure on him is so mounting that he resigns his position. That's what needs to happen. And quite frankly, so does Kim. Kim needs to resign. She's a little tyrant in the making, but here's the kind of tyrant that she is. She's a tyrant who takes her orders from a superintendent who works for her. And I've said this before and I'll continue to say this. This would be like you hiring someone to come work in your business and when they come in, as their supervisor, you get, you lay out all of their, all of their responsibilities and then on their very first day, they look at you and say, "Okay, now I'm here, I'm taking over and I'm going to tell you, business owner, I'm going to do this, I'm going to do this, I'm going to do this, and moreover, you're going to do this, you're going to do this, you're going to do this, and I'm going to tell you what you say and what you cannot say, and I'm going to tell you how things are going to run around here. Do you understand me?" That's the way Funk is, and he runs clot and Kim. He runs them, no doubt about it. You may not like this, and you might even be on the opposite side of people like Lisa. You might even be on the opposite side of, of other people in there. You may not even know any of them. You may be a complete leftist there to like demand mask on everybody and everything. You might want the trees and the desk and the, and everything masked up and put in a bubble. But what happened in that meeting last night should upset every single one of you, left, right, center, or disconnected. It should upset you because this is a sign of a school board that is out of control. And there's only one way to change this, and this is through civil, civil decent pressure put on these people to the point that they either resign or they bend to the will of the people, not to that school superintendent. And Funk needs to go, needs to be gone, fired for how he talked to Jill. And this has been happening over and over and over again. It is time for Funk to go. And this, and this is what I said about his comments before. And I encourage people to start showing up to these meetings. In fact, I encourage people to show up to wherever his office is and, and in line the area around him with signs that say, "When Funk lies, liberty dies." Because that's what happening, is happening in that school district. Funk is a liar and he's a control freak and he's breeding tyrants on the school board. Take action, Albert Lee. Take action, citizens of Minnesota. Demand the resignation of at least three of the school board members and the termination of Funk. It is time for him to go. Once again, this is not a call to violence, this is not a call to any kind of physical action against any person, place, or thing. This is a demand for civil disobedience, but civil discourse as well through an email campaign meant to put mounting pressure on the, these decision-makers. Take the power back. Until next time, six-temper tyrannists.
Please listen carefully.
Please stand by.
Please stand by.
Please stand by.
Please stand by.
Minnesota Black Robe Regiment, you are over the target. You are authorized to fire at will.